And while, okay, and while we're doing that, either Laura or Brock, I recall one of you to actually chair the meeting for the public hearing items because I'm recused.
Wouldn't Natasha do it?
But Natasha's not, not attending tonight.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
Are you volunteering, Brock?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Tag your it, okay.
I was gonna say, I can too, either one, that's fine.
Which item, can't you?
Well, the public, the public.
There is only one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it is now, it is now seven o'clock, I'm going to call to order the meeting of Larksburg planning department for Tuesday, February 22nd at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for being here and good evening. So could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Swisser.
Here.
Chair Kuntzler.
I'm here.
Commissioner Talber. Wagstaff.
Here.
And for the record, let's show that Natasha Chalmers is absent.
Thank you, thank you very much. This is a public meeting, at the beginning of every meeting, we do ask if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on matters which are specifically not on the agenda. And if that is the case, if you could use a raise hand function on your Zoom, or otherwise make, make it know that you want to speak, that would be great. I am seeing no raised hands, so with that, we can move on to the planning directors' report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Dan Hordert. So just a couple things tonight, livinginlarksburg.org is the housing element website. It is out there for people to view. There's still some, some items that are, that are being loaded into it to make it more, I guess, a little more user friendly, but it's pretty simple to use. So I'd encourage all of you to go there, livinginlarksburg.org. And the second thing is, we keep chugging along with the general plan update. City manager and myself have been reviewing the draft, administrative draft EIR sections, and there's a lot of them, and it's a very tedious job, but we're moving along with that and it's, it's kind of exciting times. Housing element is moving along quickly and we're getting ready to do some outreach efforts with that as well.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Dan Hordert? From members of the commission? See none. We do not have a consent calendar this evening, so we're going to move on to the public hearing items, which is the design review variance number 2131. I am personally recused, so I'm going to hand it over to Brock to chair this portion of the meeting, and I will mute myself and stop my video while this is going on.
Thank you, Daniel. So this is 116 Montevista Avenue. Could we have the staff report, please?
Evening, members of the commission. As you'll recall, this item was before the commission on January 11th of this year. The commission heard the staff report, heard the public testimony, debated on the proposal, and then motioned to offer the applicant to redesign to allow for creating a two-car garage with two onsite parking spaces in the driveway, consider lowering the plate heights to reduce the overall height of the house, to be consistent with the design envisioned by the architect, and work with the neighbors to ensure privacy per the recommendations made by the commission. So the applicant has revised the design, and I'll summarize those changes. The building height has been lowered about 1 foot 6 inches from 29 feet and 10 and 3/4 inches to 28 feet and 4 inches. The attic spaces are shown to be less than 7 feet high. As I've mentioned, they're providing for onsite parking spaces by widening the garage 4 feet to provide for a two-car garage, and then two cars in the driveway. So the parking variance that was originally proposed is no longer necessary and has been eliminated. In terms of the privacy issues, the upper floor windows at the staircase, the bathroom windows facing 112 Montevista, and bedroom number 2 windows facing 118 Montevista are proposed with frosted glass. In terms of the setbacks, the front deck stairs have now been modified to provide a 14-foot front setback from the property line. In terms of the heritage tree removal, the applicant is requesting a heritage removal permit to remove the Mexican fan palm located in the front yard and a lemon tree located in the northerly sideyard. Both trees meet the definition of the heritage tree. In terms of the planting shrub row fence in excess of 6 feet, the landscape plan has now been modified to include apple blossom hedgerow along the north property line. And the new plant species will grow no greater than 6 feet in height at maturity. Earthwork quantities have been revised to accommodate the enlargement of the garage and correcting managrating for the swimming pool. The story poles have been revised in the field and they reflect the modified design. The exterior finishes and colors remain as they were previously proposed. During the planning commission meeting, a member of the public expressed concern about midden having been discovered in the area of the lot on Montevista Avenue. I requested from the Northwest Information Center at Sonoma State University to conduct an archival search to determine if the site or surrounds has any finds. We just received a letter from the Northwest Information Center that was forwarded to the planning commission, and in the letter, they've indicated that there's actually no record of any previous cultural resource, resource studies for the proposed project area. They do recommend that due to the possibility of containing unrecorded archaeological finds at the site prior to demolition or other ground disturbance, they recommend a qualified archaeologist conduct further archival and field study to identify archaeological resources, including a good faith effort to identify any archaeological deposits that may show no indications on the surface. As a standard condition of approval, staff is requiring that if midden are discovered during site preparation, grading, or construction, that grading and construction activities will be halted and the city will be notified. Work shall not resume until the area has been evaluated by a qualified professional archaeologist. The commission may choose to modify this condition and add language in accordance with the Northwest Information Center's recommendation in their letter. So in terms of the zoning, the project does conform to the current zoning standards, including lot coverage, floor area, floor area ratio, setbacks, height limits, and parking. In terms of design review, staff finds that the proposed architectural design and finishes are compatible with prevailing neighborhood character and scale. This design approach, combined with the flat terrain, standard side-by-side configuration of the lots and residences, and orientation of primary viewing windows to the front and rear ensures the project will not result in a significant impact on light, air, or views of adjacent residences. The proposed design follows some of the aspects of Larkspur's Design Guidelines for Single Family Design Dwelling, I'm sorry, for single-family dwellings. The structure is placed to match the pattern of the neighborhood. The second floor is generally stepped back from the ground story and roof elements are broken up to reduce the apparent massing. Although not stepped in entirely at all sides, this is consistent with the neighborhood, which predates these requirements. As such, the structure will be compatible with the prevailing neighborhood scale and pattern of development. Staff recommends that the project is generally consistent with the findings required to approve the design review application. In terms of the heritage tree removal, the applicant is proposing to remove six of the seven existing trees on the site, and retaining only one tree, tree number 7, in the rear yard. Two of these trees are proposed for removal, which meet the definition of the heritage-sized tree. The project arborist has indicated that tree number 1, which is the Mexican fan palm, is a very tall tree with reduced vigor in the canopy. This tree appears to be out of place in the streetscape, although it is possible to retain it, it would be very close to the residence and the property owners prefer to request its removal. But one new magnolia tree would be replacing this particular tree. There is a row of palm trees planted in the right-of-way on Baltimore Avenue from Holcombe to Magnolia Avenue that were part of the original landscape plan for the subdivision. These trees are recognized by the Heritage Preservation Board and listed in Larkspur Inventory of Historic Resources. However, tree number 1 at 116 Montevista Avenue is not listed in this grouping. The project arborist has indicated that tree number 5 is a relatively small lemon bush that is only heritage due to its number of branches. The preservation of heritage trees is generally intended for more significant native species such as oaks and redwoods. The applicant's proposed to replace this tree with a row of apple blossoms. Staff finds that the replacement of the non-native Mexican fan palm tree with, with a magnolia tree to be acceptable on this small lot. Removal the Mexican fan palm and lemon in itself will not adversely affect the topography, cause increased erosion, or increase the flow of surface water. So the subject site is a small site, and the property and surrounding residential parcels are heavily vegetated. Removal the trees will not be detrimental to persons or properties in the vicinity. The fire marshal also requires that all pyrific trees and shrubs located within 5 feet of the proposed house be removed. The Mexican fan palm is about 4 feet from the southwest corner of the proposed front porch and the lemon tree is located in the narrow sideyard. Removal of both of these is required to reduce further fire hazard and create more defensible space. In terms of public comment, we've received one comment letter since the last planning commission meeting. It was from Frank and Susan Lobadon of 16 Baltimore Avenue expressing concerns related to the palm tree, the possibility of Indian midden at the site, and the proposed project in general. Staff recommends approval of the proposed design review application subject to the findings and conditions of approval outlined in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Does anybody have any questions for Lorraine?
How, how, how soon is the architect, archaeologist going to be able to get onto the site and evaluate?
I think that would be a question we could defer to the applicant.
I'm just curious, I mean, I, I think.
You'd almost have to start doing construction, because, you know, that's the only way you're going to find something, so.
We have the option of waiting until they demo the site and then do the investigation, or, or what the Northwest Information Center has suggested is that we be proactive and hire the consultant in advance. So this just came in today, so we don't have a plan for hiring them at this point.
I have a, I have a related question, and that is, that same report said that if the house was more than 45 years old, they recommended a sequo. So I, I didn't see anywhere in the report how old the house is. Is it, is it more than 45 years old?
I believe it is, yes.
I, I assume that was the case, so that, that is all, so that was also a recommendation?
The lead agency, being the city, is the agency who makes the first determination as to whether the structure has any architectural merit and deserves to be potentially listed as a historic resource. Our determination was that this building did not qualify for inclusion on the inventory and therefore is not subject to sequo.
Okay.
This whole neighborhood has actually been evaluated by the Heritage Board and the Historic Architect.
Does anybody else have any other questions? If not, I would ask that the applicant or their architect make a presentation if, if they want.
Mr. Hubbell, I will allow you to talk.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, commissioners. This is Brad Hubbell of Hubbell Daily Architecture and Design. I do not have more to add than what Lorraine already mentioned. I think she did a very thorough report and review, and we've been working closely with her to make sure that she has all the information necessary. One thing I would like to add is that, that our client, the landowner, was recently notified by PG&E, and PG&E is requesting that the palm, the fan palm be removed because it is endangerment to their power lines. So there's yet another mark against that tree's existence, if you would. We have been working with neighbors about the obscured windows. We worked on the, the element of the roof heights, the garage size to get all parking variance null, etc. So we believe that this is a strong presentation of architectural building that will fit well within this neighborhood. I'm happy to take any other comments or questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Brad? I think, I think the presentation that Lorraine made kind of covers it all, so, thanks.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this particular application? Do you see anybody, Kristen?
Mr. Arrow, I believe I just allowed. Yeah, Mr. Arrow, you can speak, you just need to unmute yourself. Or Miss Arrow.
I see a hand up there.
Yeah, I've allowed them to speak. They're, they, I don't think they're understanding that they can speak now. It's Kate Arrow. Maybe I should lower their hand, maybe they don't want to speak. Okay.
Yeah. If they, if they want to.
If they put their hand back up, we'll know they want to speak, and they're having issues. Okay, their hands back up. I am again allowing you to talk, you have to unmute yourself. Kate Arrow. They've muted themselves, but I still do not hear anything.
Volume, can, can you?
They're here, do you see them at the bottom of the screen here?
Yeah, I see them.
And they're not muted by me. I think that you have an issue with the speaker on your computer, is your volume turned up? Maybe we should go to someone else and we'll see if they can resolve it.
In theory, they could also call in on the telephone number that's given on the, on the agenda. Is anybody else want to speak? I don't see any hands up now.
Okay.
Why don't, why don't we bring it back to the planning commission, and if that person wants to speak and can unmute, we'll let them speak at that time. So why don't we start with Laura?
Okay, I was not here when this was first presented. So basically, it was a new project to me. I did go out and look at the site. I'll be honest, my biggest concern, and it sounds like it was raised before, was from the story poles, it just looks like it's a lot taller than everything around it. And part of that has to do with putting the garage underneath, which just raises the whole house up. But I still, I, I guess I still have questions about the height of the house. And like I said, I think the design is nice. It, I sort of see what they're doing. But, you know, it seems like they've addressed the other questions and, and issues that were raised before. Obviously, the midden thing is a new one as of today, which will have to be addressed. But as I said, I still have, have some, some qualms about how tall it is. So I will now defer to my fellow commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey?
Oh, we discussed that at length on the last meeting about the height, and it, it is under the legal limit of how tall it can be, so they're perfectly allowed to build it at the height that it's at. They actually have accommodated it by lowering it a little bit. I think part of the thing is that it has the sense of apparent height, because we discussed that the actual grade is higher than what you perceive it to be because of the existing, because that area is elevated a little bit, so it does, you know, the height measured from the existing grade is, is fine. I think it'll be fine, I think it's a really nice design, I think it, it works nicely. I'm glad that they accommodated the other concerns about privacy by putting the windows in. I, I personally, I, I know this house quite well, I drive, I ride my bicycle by it all the time. I don't like that palm tree, I think it's an eyesore, to be honest, and I think if PG&E thinks it's an eyesore, I mean, a problem for them for transmission lines, that's fine. It's not necessarily a native tree to this area, so it doesn't, in my estimation, I don't think it's a big problem to take it out. Lemon tree as well, I mean, you know, they're not endangered trees, so I don't have a problem with them taking that one out either. So I would vote in favor of it.
I see that Catherine Arrow's hand is, is back up again, Kristen, can we let her speak?
Yes, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you for your patience, I was having technical difficulty, so is, is now a good time to bring up my concerns?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, so my name is Catherine Arrow, I live at 1 Baltimore Avenue. My family and I have lived here for 32 years, and I would like to just make some, three brief comments, one on the heritage tree, one on the midden, and one on the, the building's height. So I am quite fond of palm trees, it's one of the reasons why I live on Baltimore Avenue, was very attractive to me, and I've made an effort to plant Washingtonian palms in my front yard to help mimic the design at 1 Baltimore Avenue. There is the half-moon end of the street, if you're familiar with that, and those trees wrap around by the Cavalry Baptist Church, so I've made an effort to repeat that. So this is coming from somebody who really loves these palm trees. There was a comment that it was out of place, the trees don't have to be listed, that it wasn't listed as a, as a feature to the neighborhood like the Baltimore Park trees are, and that it's not native. So what I want to say is, is that I, I see what you're talking about on an aesthetic basis for that specific tree in that specific location. So my main concern is, is that as we look at heritage trees in the city of Larkspur, is, is that we remember not to discount trees that don't quite fit into the box, if, if you know what I mean. And so just because it seems out of place doesn't mean that doesn't still get to be treated like a heritage tree. Trees that aren't listed as a, as a historic asset of the neighborhood don't have to be listed to qualify as a heritage tree. And it also does not have to be native to qualify as a heritage tree. Also, it's mentioned that the tree is pyrific. Washingtonian palms, like other palms, are only pyrific when they have not had their trunks skinned. And so what happens, as you can see on a portion of the tree in question, is part of the trunk has that buildup of dead material, and that is the part that's pyrific. So the trunk and the crown are standard tree material, and that part is not considered pyrific. So a palm tree is only pyrific if it has not been maintained. And so cleaning it can fix that problem. It's also, their comment is that the tree is 4 feet from the building, and it needs to be 5 feet. I'd say that the tree's been there a lot longer than this new building is proposed to be, and that the house should have to move away from the tree. So I'm saying this, and I have a feeling that tree is going to go, so I'm, you know, I'm not throwing myself on a sword over this one, but I just want to, in the concept of how we protect heritage trees in Larkspur, just because this one doesn't quite fit in, doesn't mean it should be discounted. So that's what I wanted to say about the tree. And then on the Native American midden, I did, because of my technical difficulties, come in a little bit later, and I hear that there is the plan to bring in an archaeologist. And I just strongly recommend that that does get done before the house is demolished. Because they're putting in a swimming pool, that is open area that is much easier for an archaeologist to examine. Obviously, the part where the garage would be under the house would be more challenging. There have been some homes, and it was kind of in the far past, I remember in San Rafael where a house was demolished, human remains were found, and then the homeowner was not allowed to rebuild for five years as it went through the process, and maybe the process is much more efficient now. But I think it would be a shame for the homeowner to find themselves with a demolished home and then have a significant site. I, I am calling you as a citizen of Larkspur and not as my professional capacity, but I do work for the National Park Service, and I work at Fort Mason, and we have some very serious archaeological sites, and we work with our park archaeologists all the time. So this is something that is, it's pretty straightforward process to do, and I just strongly recommend to get done before demolition is done. And then, let's see, the height of the building, and I don't know when I'm going to run out of time because I don't know what my clock is, so I'll just keep talking quickly. The height of the building, it's my understanding that we measure from the sidewalk, from the street, from the entry point of the property, and then go up 30 feet. It appears that they're starting about 2 feet higher, and I understand in the previous meeting, there was a discussion as to how that height was determined, and I just want to make sure that we are being consistent with every time we measure that we use the same point of demarcation, because I'm not seeing that in this drawing. It looks like it's about 2 feet higher, you're started off the curb about 2 feet higher. Kind of hard to tell because there isn't a measurement in the drawing for that.
But I want to. Catherine, it's, Catherine, it's Jeff Swisher, it's not, it's not measured from the sidewalk, it's measured from mean average grade, and that was discussed extensively at the last meeting. So that's not how it's determined from the sidewalk level.
So I saw the Lobadon letter, and they had an example that was part of the code, so was that not correct?
Exactly, as my understanding from our last meeting, yeah, that wasn't, that, that, and the, the planning commission professionals can, can go actual rule about that, but it's, it's measured from the, the grade from up, and it is in compliance per the findings from last time.
Okay, well then I appreciate you clarifying that. I agree with one of the other commissioners that it just does seem a bit too high for the area. It just, it, it comes off that way. So those are my comments. I thank you very much for your time, if you had any questions for me, otherwise I'll, I'll say thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, I'm glad you were able to, to get, get in finally.
Does anyone want me to go over how height is measured?
Yes, I think, why don't you do that, Kristen?
Okay, so height isn't an average, it's measured at any point where. where finished grade or created grade touches the building to the point of the roof above. So at the front, where it is below the sidewalk elevation, you would measure to the roof line above it. As you step back, you measure to the grade line here, to the top of the building here. And you do this through slices to the building. You don't measure the parts underground. You measure to the grade. Once it's buried underground, it's not included in the height limit. So because they stepped the bulk of the body back from the front portion that projects, you measure these sections separately to their, each to their own finished grades. So here to here, here to the grade next to it, you would just march back through the building. And we do this on all properties with a slope.
Yes. Thank you. That was, that was great. I guess unless one of the other commissioners wants to add something to what they said before, I will, I will do my part now and say what I think, which is that I very much appreciate the fact that they made that into a two-car garage. Makes that street, which does have some parking difficulties, it makes it a much nicer house for whoever is living there. And you know, I wish they would have dropped it another foot or so, which they could have done. But in fact, it doesn't bother me the way it is. I think it's a handsome house. I think they've done a great job. I think they paid attention to the neighbors. And I can certainly support it the way it is. Would anybody, any of the other commissioners like to add anything to what they've said? Or shall we go to having Jeff put out a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on the 116 Montevista, and I can't do this as well as the lawyers on the commission, whatever the number is, and whatever the plan number is for approval.
Do you want to add any additional conditions regarding the midden investigation? Do you want to, do you want them investigate before the project is issued a permit?
No, I would like them to retain a, an archaeologist in the process. But I mean, I don't know how difficult that is, and I wouldn't want this to be a, I mean, I agree with Ms. Arrow, Ms. Arrow, that it's important for this to be looked at. And I think that it should be looked at. They should retain one prior to the, you know, demolition, so that they have one available if something is found.
And Jeff, can you be explicit about the tree, too?
Oh, yeah, I would vote that, that, that I'm, I am fine with the application for the heritage tree for this tree removal. I, again, I very much respect and appreciate Mrs. Arrow's concerns. But I don't feel like, I think that the issue with PG&E is probably from the crown where the power lines are, that they're concerned that it's flammable from there, and that it interferes with power lines, as I understand it. And again, you know, I also believe that it doesn't have to be a natural tree to be part of the heritage. But this one in particular is not, I don't find it to be very, this is personal. I just don't find it to be a very attractive tree. And there's many more good examples of palms along Baltimore, but those aren't Mexican family palms or different types of palm trees. But anyway, so yes, I would say I would approve the heritage tree removal. I would move to approve the heritage tree removal.
Can we have a second? Laura, do you want to, you were hesitant before. Do you want to say anything more?
I actually would like to see them keep the tree, and I think it's too tall. So I am not going to second. I think you only need two votes anyway.
Right, but can I, because I'm technically but I will second then. And then we can have a roll call, Kristen?
Commissioner Tauber?
No.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
And for the record, we're gonna show that Daniel Kuntzler has recused himself, and that Natasha Chalmers is absent.
Thank you.
Daniel?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, Brock. Thank you, Jeff, for the longest motion on record.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Daniel Horter can ask you a quick procedural question. When you only have a three-person quorum, and we do have a fourth person who could vote had she been here, can they pass this motion on a two-to-one vote?
You're muted, Daniel.
I was trying not to. Yeah, I was questioning that myself, whether or not that that was a legitimate quorum.
Well, you know, I do have a precedent, I think about a year ago.
This has come up before.
And I was yeah, I was, it was a similar situation where we had the chair, whoever was chairing that portion of the meeting, which I think was myself at the time, did second, and then we had, then we had a vote on, a vote with three people, with two-to-one. So I believe it has been done before. Is that your recollection, Laura?
Yes, I believe we have done this before.
I thought that was just for minutes. Okay. All right.
To be honest, I don't, I don't recall precisely. But there was no, there was no impediment to whoever was chairing that discussion to actually second the motion. Okay. We can move on to the, to the business items, which would be, we've got, we need to approve the minutes of the meeting of January twenty-fifth. And we need to approve revised minutes from the meeting of November twenty-third. So perhaps I can ask for a motion, the first of the motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-fifth, and that we can maybe discuss quickly the changes that were made to the November twenty-third meeting minutes.
I can move approval of January twenty-fifth minutes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I see none. I don't think we really need to do the roll call. Then we have approval of the minutes November twenty-third.
These minutes have not been amended. They were never adopted. They got overlooked due to the holiday season, the meeting, I can't even say it. The minutes clerk did not think we had a meeting and didn't do them. I discovered it and brought them forward, and the applicant in these minutes reviewed them and has provided you with a list of suggested revisions.
Okay, so my only question there would be number five and number eleven, whether these things were actually said out loud during that meeting? Because I, my understanding of the purpose of the meetings is to record the oral debate deliberation, which is taking place over the course of that meeting. So I don't know if these are editorial comments, or if they are actually reflect the course of that meeting. Otherwise, I have no problem with that, with them personally. I can ask my fellow commissioners what they feel. Does anybody have any comments on?
I was not at the meeting, so I can't comment. I don't know.
Okay.
And I, I don't see a problem with with the changes or the honestly, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it makes much difference, but
I think, although, that this particular individual is not the appropriate person to determine Mr. Figuara meant to say, for instance. He did say the word wall and not fence. I think he did mean fence, but he said wall. That's a comment number nine.
Oh, right, that's Oh, that's right. You're correct. It was meant to say fence. Well, I think, I think Kristen's right. I mean, the purpose of the minutes is to record what was said, not what was meant to be said. So I think that's gotta be changed back to all, if that's the word that was used. So I'm not quite sure how we design a motion around this, other than say, well, with the exception of item number nine, that we would approve the minutes.
Even though I wasn't there, I just have a question about this, because I presume the minutes were made, and there's a recording
Yes.
of the meeting. So the question, it looks like some of those are comments that are sort of editorial comments as opposed to factual comments. And that doesn't seem appropriate if they, again, as people were saying, if it's just a reporting of what was said.
I guess you're right.
You know, so like number five, but that some sightline impairment might not have lived up. I mean, it's, you know.
So, so what we could possibly do is say, well, you know, we do have, we do have an official of the, of the city who does the transcription of these minutes. And that aside from, let's say, the typographical errors in people's names, that we in fact make those the only modifications to the, you know, to these minutes. And approve them with those modifications. Does that sound like a plan?
I think that's the only plan, as far as
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I wasn't there, so I don't know factually whether these things are right, but it doesn't seem right to me that somebody would be challenged.
Yeah, on principle, I agree with Laura. So Laura, do you want to, do you want to make a motion that encapsulates that?
Can I do that, since I wasn't at the meeting?
I don't think
Again, I don't feel like I can really opine on the minutes themselves.
Okay, although, yeah, it has been determined that if you believe that they're faithful representations, you can, even if you're not there, you can actually vote on the, on the matter. That was, that was discussed at a prior meeting. Okay, well, having said that, Brock, you want to take a stab at that?
So what are, what are we trying to say exactly?
Prove the minutes with the only modifications being the misspellings of participants' names.
I would say approve the minutes with the only changes being the misspelling of people's names.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Laura, are you, are you nodding?
I mean, I would say I am, but again, I'm not sure I'm supposed to opine on minutes that I wasn't at the meeting.
If you're more comfortable abstaining, that's fine.
I'll just abstain.
Okay, all right. So we've got, we have three in favor, one abstention, and noting that Commissioner Chalmers is absent this evening. Okay, do we have any planning commissioner reports? I just want to, I just want to mention that there were, there were two meetings. One hosted by the city of Larkspur's city council, and one hosted by the by the Board of Supervisors for the County of Marin on twelve fifty-one South Alisio, which has turned into a controversy, which actually has gotten some statewide attention. It's, speaking for myself personally, it was not always a good look. We, I did hear a lot of disparaging stereotypes that left me with a feeling of deep discomfort. But just so you're all aware, you're likely, you're likely to hear from, you know, neighbors and people, even people that outside the, outside the city, you're likely, you're likely to hear, you know, commentary. And if nowhere else in the, in the press, and in fact, both Brock and I have received correspondence from, from one citizen. You know, commenting, somewhat obliquely commenting on the twelve fifty-one, on twelve fifty-one project, so just a heads up on that. And then the agenda calls for the election of officers, but that was done at the prior meeting. So the final item on this evening's agenda is a German.
Oh, no, you've missed the business item, number one.
Good try, though.
I lost my hand.
Do I have a, that's funny, approval of minutes, approval of minutes?
We did it.
Bottom of the first page. Annual progress report on general plan and housing element.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was not in my packet.
It's not in my packet either.
Not my packet.
You got the agenda, right?
Yeah, but my version of the agenda they have printed out doesn't have it.
Mine doesn't either.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, wow, I don't know how that's possible, because like
So we're gonna go back to that, to what was actually supposed to be the first business items. In fact, I did read in detail the chart. So that was presented with the discussion of the housing, various parts of the housing element and general plan for twenty twenty-one. There was a lot of work that was actually done. Actually, Kristen, do you want to say more on this?
No, but I think Daniel Horter may wish to.
Okay.
It's me. This is an annual exercise the city does every year. State law requires the planning agency to submit their, to the governing bodies, an annual report on the status of their general plan and the housing element for housing activities from the previous year. These reports are due to the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research by April first each year. The staff report I prepared consists of a background on the annual progress report. And part of that was Table B, which is the regional housing needs allocation progress. Those are the RENA numbers that you hear about all the time. And that basically covers permits issued by affordability. And this past year, only one unit was issued a building permit. And it was the above moderate level for affordability. The previous year, twenty twenty, only had one unit, which was permitted at the low-income level. So also part of the
Daniel, you might have to pause for just a second, because you're having a couple bandwidth issues.
Housing program, progress report, and the details, the goals. All these programs, the housing element, and any progress.
We just lost him.
Yes, I think, I think his bandwidth was
That's what I'm saying. It's like he was in outer space.
After what he said, actually.
Something about the housing element.
Here he's back.
You're on mute, Daniel.
I'm back.
Oh, great. Yeah, you were having, your bandwidth was shrinking, so we had a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, I apologize for that. So I don't know where I ended off, but the city did entitle two single-family homes this past year and three accessory structures, but they have not gotten their permits yet, so they'll be counted next year, hopefully. Staff is asking the planning commission, recommend that city council accept the annual progress report for submittal, the HCD and OPR. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions for, for Daniel Horter? Okay, so the motion that we need to, you know, to entertain is to actually make that recommendation. I, I did, you know, read everything in, you know, in detail. And I mean, it's, there's a great amount of very, very good information in there. So I think it'd be, I certainly would like to make the recommendation. The one thing is that perhaps as you go through the, all the verbiage on those pages, there are some acronyms that are not defined. there, there are some acronyms that are not defined. It might be a good idea to make sure that all of the acronyms are actually defined. This is going to people from outside of the city to make sure that their understanding is complete. And then maybe simply just just copy edit for, you know, for their few, you know, typos and grammatical things. But other than that, other than that, you know, we see this kind of reports, you know, before, and they're really, they're really good, extremely informative. Does anybody else want to comment on this before we go into a motion?
Mr. Che.
Excuse me?
Mr. Chair, just those acronyms, are you talking about in the staff report or in the?
No, actually, the table.
One of the tables in the back. Okay, yeah, it's a lot of information. I'll go through it.
There's a few grammatical things, and also, if you just be sure that all of the acronyms are actually defined. So there's some clarity for people outside the city that are looking, you know, at the state level, they're looking at this document.
Like CLASP?
There were a couple. I mean, offline, I can, you know, you know, maybe tomorrow something I can go over the stuff that I picked up, if if that's helpful. But it's, it's, you know, we're looking, you know, kind of typo, you know, typo level. So could I get, could I get a on the staff recommendations, the the, it's only the second item, which would be subject to a motion, which is the second bullet point on page two of the staff report. So can I get a motion based on that?
So we're trying to just approve this to to go on to city council? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we recognize this to be conveyed to the city council, yeah.
Okay, well, I can make a motion to, I guess, approve the annual housing element progress report to forward it on to city council.
Okay, can I get a second of that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call on that, Daniel, or?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we on this one? Could we get a roll call?
Yes, you can. Sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Tauber?
Yes.
Chair Kuntler?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
And for the record, let it show that Natasha Chalmers is absent.
Hey, thank you. So the, so the motion passes. So now I can go back to my original agenda and determine if there's only one more item left for consideration, which is adjournment. So adjournment, so can I have a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess we could dispense with the roll call on that one. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. You too.
Hi.
Daniel, stay on. I want to ask you a question, please.
Okay.
I'm I'm sorry, Daniel Horter.
All right, I'll be that way.
Daniel Kuntler?
Yes.
Are you still there?
I am.
At some point, maybe we should talk about electrification, people, you and I.
Yeah, okay, well, subject to the the corresponding.